Good evening, everyone. This is the Planning and Zoning Committee. We begin. The first thing we'll do is call to order if a roll call. Commissioner. Yes, ma'am?
Jan Rutke? Or do you need?
Do I need to start again? No.
Nope.
Good evening, everyone. The Planning and Zoning Commission will now begin. And we'll start with the roll call. Commissioner Rutke.
Jan Rutke.
Rachel Weaver.
Cindy Greenold.
Kathleen Boral.
Laura Blackwelder.
Brown.
Ellie Hahn.
Thank you. Please note, all the commissioners are present. Before we begin, I would just like to have a moment of silence for those who lost their life with the failure of the Key Bridge. And let us remember them and their families, as well as the first responders who so quickly got to the scene and prevented further loss of life with the closing of the bridge, and all those who are working to safeguard the bridge and also with the recovery of the individuals who lost their life. Thank you. We'll begin with the approval of the March 27, 2024 Planning Commission Agenda.
We have approval.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The record reflect, there are no nays. The approval of the Planning Commission Agenda is complete. Now, we'll do the approval of the minutes of the February 21 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 21 Planning Commission meeting.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, let the record reflect, no opposition. And now, we will open the door to any public comment on any item on the agenda.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Clint Houck with Rock Remodeling. And I have-
I'm sorry, say your name again.
Clint Houck.
Clint Howard?
Houck. H-O-U-C-K. Houck.
Okay. And if you- Is your microphone?
I think so.
There we go. Green light?
Yeah.
And will you please give your address?
1095 Solers Wharf Road, Leslie, Maryland.
Okay.
I'm actually acting as a contractor for two residents here in Chesapeake Beach. One is Ross Dabindanza, who's at 7976 Dolores Court. And the other is Tracy Delina, who is at 7972 Dolores Court. They're actually next-door neighbors. So I'm here to, just to give some comments on the, I guess, a proposed amendment to Section 290-19 that would allow less open space than 20% on the properties. So I contracted with these two individuals, and the client at 7972 has an existing deck. I proposed to replace it in-kind, meaning same size, same square footage. The homeowners told me that the original deck was permitted and inspected. I don't have the information as to when. But then I went to get it approved through the county here, and it was denied for lot coverage. Decks, most places I deal with lot coverage maximums only refer to impervious structures. But I guess here in Chesapeake Beach, it's any structure, even if it's permeable, even if water can pass through it, which was kind of a new thing to me. But either way, the lot with the new deck, same as what's there, their lot coverage would be 86%. These are, and then for Ross, he doesn't have a deck. His lot coverage after the proposed deck that was also denied at 7976, the lot coverage would be 90%. And as I said, that was also denied. I submitted pictures to Fran and to Holly Wall of that row of townhouses. And every house in that whole row, except for Ross's, has a deck that protrudes out right around the same distance that I'm trying to do a deck protruding. So I don't know if these, I have no information if these properties were permitted, but I mean, we're talking, I have pictures of this whole row, and we're talking like six other houses that have decks no bigger than what I'm proposing to do with these two properties, but I was denied. So I'm here requesting that the lot coverage be increased, or the required open space be decreased to less than 20%. I mean, these are, they don't have any property here. They're just, it's, you know, you walk out the front door, and if you trip, you're falling into the street. In the back, I mean, they've got not a whole lot of room from the back of the house to their property line in the rear. And I don't know, it just seems like they should be able, everybody should be able to have a deck. And I was quite shocked with the disapprovals. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to confirm, is that Seagate you're talking about? The Seagate Village? Or Seagate?
It is.
Townhomes?
Just give me one more.
Is that?
No.
Is that not it?
That's not it.
Where is Dolores Court? I'm sorry.
Back here.
Bayview. Bayview Hills.
Oh, Bayview.
Bayview, that's right.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner? Oh, okay.
And these would be on the property, on the homeowner's property?
Correct. Within the lot lines.
Yeah.
Yeah. Of course, with townhouses, there's typically no building restriction lines from on left to right, because you're neighboring with, you know, the houses are together. So typically, there's no BRLs on either side. I'm not seeing that on the property. So we're, I mean, we're proposing to go within inches of the, you know, the outside of the townhouse, which is pretty typical in townhouse neighborhoods. But-
Are these in-townhouses or interior townhouses?
Interior townhouses? I mean, as far as, it's not in-units?
Yeah.
No, no, both of them are interior. Yeah, they're in the row. They're pretty much in the, both of them are pretty much in the middle.
Neighbors on either side have decks?
So Tracy Delina has an existing deck that I want to replace, the same size, and then a very similar size on Ross's. Ross is actually, Ross Dabindanza is actually the only person in the row that does not have a townhouse, or in the whole row of townhouses, does not have a deck. Everybody else does. And I didn't sit and take a tape measure on everybody's deck and everybody's property, because I didn't want to go and, you know, into people's yards and, you know, step in dog litter and all that crazy stuff. But they're, they're all right around the projection that we're proposing to do the deck set. So, you know, I guess I'm here on behalf of both of my clients, and also trying not to lose two contracted jobs.
Commissioner Weaver?
What was the code number again?
290-19.
Okay.
Yeah, according to Holly Wall, it was on your agenda for, to, yeah. So I'm just here advocating for that.
Sorry, because I'm relatively new to planning and zoning. Is this something that was a change from the planning, from the last comprehensive plan, or is this, has this been the case?
I believe we're just, we're just reviewing it. If the town planner can qualify that.
I don't know what happened before I came onboard in September. There are regulations around townhomes and how they're constructed, so that when a townhome community is built, if decks are put on it, they can be allowed, but then the rest of the zoning doesn't have what's needed to permit them to be added after the fact. Or even the side setbacks were fudging a little, like, so that's why I brought to you guys to say, do we want, we want to allow townhome decks? We have to make this amendment to the zoning. I don't know why they were, I don't know how or why things are being approved before, but we have combed over and agreed that it's not technically permitted.
So currently, according to the code, it is not permitted at this juncture. And previously, without a change to the code, they were approved.
My understanding is that they were being approved under the previous code. I don't, I do not know how that was being, I don't, I don't know anything about that. I just know that-
So right now, in compliance with the code as it's written currently, they are not being approved.
Correct.
And-
And that's why I brought you this amendment.
Same code, without a change, had been approved previous, it seems.
Right. We don't have all the details on all of them, because if you look around, the townhomes often have decks. And I don't know what the zoning ordinance looked like when they were approved. I don't know how they were approved. I don't know if the interpretation of the building requirements was used. But-
Grandfathering doesn't apply in this situation? In the sense that they're simply doing what the majority are doing?
No. The grandfathering possibly could be construed to apply to the deck that's existing, but that would depend on when it was permitted and what the zoning ordinance said at that time. The cleanest, the cleanest solution to this problem is to adopt this amendment. And in looking at like Board of Appeals cases, like, they could go to Board of Appeals, but it would probably wind up getting denied on the basis that it's something that actually needs to be changed in the zoning code. Again, like, I don't know what happened before. I don't know why it happened before. But we have spent a lot of time analyzing this and going over it and what it should say, so.
What is the effect on this gentleman's two clients if we approve what you've proposed?
So if you approve this and send it over to Town Council, and then they adopt it, once it takes into effect, those two clients will be able to construct their decks. We've internally agreed, if that happens, that we won't charge them a new fee. We will just keep them in a stack. And if this is adopted.
Vice Chair, Greenold.
Thank you. Okay, these are in Bayview Hills, then? These two homes that you're doing?
I believe that's the neighborhood.
Or, yeah, okay. Is there an open space behind those properties?
Yes.
There's an open space behind those properties as well?
There's a big open space behind there. And then it kind of berms up and then goes down to like a, I don't know what one would call a swamp.
And is there a fence right behind all the properties?
There is.
So there's no fencing, it's just-
I don't believe any of the properties have, have a fence.
So nothing around the townhomes then?
I mean, I could verify it in my pictures, but I'm pretty sure none of them do.
But they do back up to an open space area? And there's no sidewalks or nothing behind the homes? It would be like a park?
There's nothing in the rear of these homes. This specific row, there's other rows that are in line with it, you know? So, you know, you've got a row of like maybe eight townhouses, and then a space, and then another row of them. The back of them is all, it's, you know, you have the property line, and then you have probably several feet of flat space. And then, like I said, there's a berm that kind of goes up, and then a hill kind of goes down, and it's like a, you know, a messy creek or swamp, or, but there's nothing back there. It's, and that runs the whole, I mean, there's no anything. Trees, trees, open space.
Do you have any pictures? Can you show us the pictures that you took?
Sure. Let me just approach. And then this is all grass and then trees, and then-
Okay.
We'll say creek on the other side. So you can see every house there. This one right here is Tracy Delina's, that I'm, like I said, I'm proposing to replace in-kind, size-wise. And then the one right next to it here, that's the only one in the, in the whole row that doesn't have a deck. And that's Ross's.
Okay. Anybody else want to see it?
Yes.
When did you put this application in?
If you scroll, I think to the left, you can see more.
February 7th for Delina. And the 8th for Dabindanza.
So the property, Mr. Ross's property without the deck, he will have the comparable deck that the neighbor has?
Very, very similar. He, very similar. He doesn't want stairs, so it's a little, little different. His deck is going to be a little wider, because the space where, like, the stairs would be on Delina's, there's going to be more deck. But we're talking width-wise, projection-wise, it's still, I believe, right around the same. But I could confirm that.
So there's, oh, stairs coming down from the deck?
Correct. In the same location as that one that you can see there.
And do you have a photograph of the area, the open space area?
Just what's, just what you can see in the picture there, if you-
If you move the picture, there's a couple of them that he showed me.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, but I don't have any, like, with my back turned to the houses, though. I don't have any pictures of that.
So for the in-kind deck that you requested, what was the reason given to you that you could not build, rebuild an in-kind structure on your property?
It wasn't going to allow 20% of open space. So the opens, the total lot coverage, now this is townhouse, proposed deck, sidewalk to the street, and maybe like stoop or whatever in front of the, of the townhouse. Dabindanza was at 90%, and Delina was at 86%. And so, and they, you know, don't want to really shrink it up, because already, they're already relatively small decks that we're proposing anyway. So to shrink it up to get it to 80% is really gonna, I mean, and they're gonna have a much smaller deck than everybody else in their row, so.
Right. So it was the town or the county that denied an in-kind rebuild?
I say this, and I kind of giggle as I say it, but apparently, it was the mayor of Upper Marlboro that declined them?
Oh, it's the town. The town plan.
Okay. So I'll, Sarah, I'll have some questions for you about the rules governing in-kind rebuilding.
Do we have any further questions for?
One last question. Why is Mr. Delina wanting to replace it?
Because the person that built previous one should not own a hammer.
Oh, safety.
Own a hammer.
Safe.
It's terrible. It's in disrepair. It's not even repairable, the way that it's framed. It's a, I could show you pictures of it. It's, it-
How old is that deck?
I have, I have a 13-year-old son that's done, been on the job with me enough that he could have built a better deck than that one.
How old is that deck?
I don't have that information.
No further questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I'm sure he would like his phone.
Is that all you need from me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll just, who do I check with to see how it goes? Or will somebody let me know?
Yes, the town. Well, what we will do tonight is we are going to review this amendment, the zoning code. And then after that, it will be proposed to the Town Council.
Okay.
So they have to, they have to approve that.
I got you.
We can't, we only make the recommendation what-
I understand.
And then they will review that when the next, it gets on their agenda.
It gets on their agenda? When is that? November?
No, I mean, it-
This is a priority.
Yeah.
It's a priority.
Because it's, it's a problem if it is, stays how it is.
You're not the only individual experiencing this, the only contractor, so that's one-
Where are the other ones?
You're the brave one.
I guess.
You're a good contractor, coming all the way to Town Hall for your client.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right. Then we will proceed to old business. And the first item is the review of Section 290-19, parentheses F, zoning code. And I believe you all have a memo that was prepared by the town planner?
I don't.
You don't? Commissioner Brown, would you like a moment to look over the memo?
I'll read it this afternoon.
Oh, okay. All right. Everybody has read the memo? Okay. So I guess we'll start with the town planner in regards to the memo. You were just, I see that you have a, you identified for us the limitations of the, of the code and how it directly impacts decks to the townhomes and other single-family units. So, and I see your, you've made a recommendation to us, so, to address these issues. So is there anything further that you would like to add?
Yeah, so the only thing further that I do want to add is, if you go to page 2 of the memo, number 4, subject to subsections J and M, 90% decks, less than 100 square feet where there are no other accessory uses. This is much smaller than what these two townhomes are wanting to propose. It does not need to be 100 feet. I also did not want to provide you something that is very high. I think it's worth having a discussion about how big of a deck it would be okay to permit where it gets to this higher percentage of open space.
So just for my clarification, it says the minimum open space requirements may be up to 90% for decks and porches less than 100 square feet. Can you clarify that? I'm not sure what that means.
So that specific piece is addressing what the public was just commenting on here, which is that in, in townhomes, you have this smaller lot. And so when you put on a deck, you start to bump up against the minimum open space requirement, which is actually open space, not anything constructed. And-
That's behind, that's what's behind the deck?
Or proposed- Anywhere on the lot. So regardless of your lot, you have your house, you have your shed, you have your deck, and then you have open space. Your driveway is not open space. So on a townhouse, your open space is much lower to start with, because your lot is very tiny. So when this open space requirement is applied to townhomes, generally, they have enough space. But in some instances, and not just a few, but in a consistent number of instances, it means that you have, can't really have a deck or have to have a much smaller deck. Now, the 100 square feet is a discussion point, because that's another, that's a small deck, right? And the question is, how big of a deck do you want to allow people to have when they are getting up against that open space limit? Is it, is it fine to, when your lot is very small, to just use the whole space? At the same time, this is going to apply to a large lot, too, a larger lot. So it's finding that minimum size of deck that you all are comfortable with, allowing.
May I ask a question?
Commissioner Blackwelder?
The problem that we're trying to solve is that there's townhouses that exist. And those townhouses that exist are trying, need to have the capability of building a deck. So my thoughts are that, you know, you have Seagate, you have Bayview Hills, you're going to have some things in Richfield Station, you're going to have some things in Middle Subdivision. And they are all going to have a different scenario. So it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all for those townhouses. So if we are trying to solve these problems for existing townhouses, then I think we should probably write the code for existing townhouses specifically. A lot like Chris wrote, the amendment that accommodated the existing commercial use in Horizons by the Bay. So my thought is, we would need to craft very specific language to address what is essentially a grandfathering issue, to allow these people to have decks. Because if we apply a general code also to the new townhouses being built, we might, you know, give up too much open space. Additionally, we might do the right thing for this person in Bayview Hills, but then that turns out to be something unintended for Seagate, or something in Middle Subdivision, or something in Richfield Station. So I would like, I mean, I, if there is a way to interpret the code to allow for the quite obvious solution that this person can build a deck, I would prefer that the code regularly be interpreted that way. But if it can't be, I think we need to be careful about what kind of blanket regulations we put in place every time and each comes before us, because it can have impacts elsewhere. So that's, that's kind of my thought on this.
So you would have different standards for different areas?
I would. We have different districts, you know, and, and a grandfathering item of the code functions much differently. It has a date. It has-
But you would have different codes for different size requirements for different areas of the town?
I would, yes.
You have any further comment, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I think one of the unique things about townhomes is they have open space behind their lot. So in the case of this person, and I think most other townhouses, you have plenty of open area beyond the lot line that you're, that were there and will not change. And so I would say- And so I would say that that should be one hundred percent. However, you want to work it, but over the entire property line.
Does anyone else have questions for Sarah? Vice Chair?
So, everything that I researched on this kept coming up with several things. One thing is now you based number three specifically on properties that backed up to open space areas.
As a condition that.
As a condition.
Correct.
Not all townhomes have or, or will have open space behind them.
And then this wouldn't apply to them.
And it wouldn't apply, this wouldn't apply to them.
Right.
Okay, so this, I mean, I don't know of all the properties that we have, the townhomes back up to open space. I'm assuming there are a number of them. I mean, are we talking, what, thirty, forty?
That don't back up to open space.
You're, you're saying that, okay, I know that a lot of Seagate backs up to open space. Um, I know, obviously the Bayview Hills back up to open space, at least that row. Do all the rows back up to open space at Bayview Hills? Or do we know?
I, I'm just, I want to understand if you're referring to open space or forested space? Because pretty, all the townhomes per the requirements of the code have to have common open space around them. So, most townhomes are going to back up to permanent open space in some quantity. So.
So this will apply to all townhomes, then you're saying?
It should, but if there's a townhome that doesn't back up to permanent open space, then it's not going to, that's what it's.
Oh, you're talking about Chesapeake. Yeah, you're talking about.
Small area.
The ones that back up to Roland's don't have open space behind them, except for the driveway. That's true. You know, and I'm, the well, you know, we know what we're talking about.
No.
No, it's. Station, thank you, station.
But the, those that back up, there's a road back there, but they have past their decking, they, there's a little space area, not a lot, but there is.
What about the?
Wait a minute, wait, I'm not, let me keep my.
Go to your question.
Okay, so that's number one, is that not, so let's just take that one development. Bayview Hills, let's just say. That one row backs up to open space, but we don't know if all the other townhomes for sure back up to open space. They do. But let's just take the one that we were just talking about, that that we were talking about Chesapeake Station. Some of it does back up to open space, but as, as we were just saying, some of it does not. So what I'm, I'm wondering is, will it look silly if within a development, some of the people can have ninety percent, but some cannot? Will that be a challenge? And will it look funny? I mean, let's just call, call that an issue. And will this apply to future developments? Will people, will people build townhomes based on this idea that, you know, people can build these tremendously huge, or not tremendously huge, but I'm just saying, you know, the decks that will actually be most of their yard, ninety percent of their yard, let's just say. That would probably apply, right? It would apply to any new future development.
Right, so the idea is, is that if the town isn't constructed with a deck, you still have the option to add a deck. Even in, in new development.
You said if the townhouse doesn't have a deck.
Right, if someone builds new townhouses without decks, that doesn't mean that once you purchase it, if there's permanent open space behind it, then you couldn't add a deck.
Okay, so then if we look at like Seagate, they're unique in that they're right on a critical area. I mean, that's, you know, right there on that little inlet is truly a critical area. Are we changing, are, is that going to be an impact issue right there with being on the critical area? You know, typically we have rules about that as well. And then the other thing that I've been finding in research is that there is a fire issue that you don't want to have any, you know, you want to leave a certain amount of land around a deck because apparently a lot of fires begin on the decks. You've got the, you know, barbecues, you've got pots, you've got all kinds of issues. Apparently, the fire department has an issue with having an excessive amount of decking with relationship to the size lot. And have you researched that? Have you looked at that at all? Because that apparently is in many, many areas. I don't know about this area per se, but, you know, I was hoping that you could give me an answer on that, about the fire hazard issues.
So I, I can't talk to the fire hazard issue. I want to talk to the open space issue if possible. So I just was pulling up so I can visualize each place. You're more familiar with them than I am, but the Chesapeake, which one?
Station.
Station. They don't appear to have permanent open space behind them, so they wouldn't be able to do this. Permanent, the idea is, if you have a single family home, you can construct a deck within your setbacks. We've just taken all those single family homes, put them into one block, and given a setback that's functionally open space. And then we're also applying the single family lot size, right, to their, their bit of yard. So they're having, you know, they have these setbacks and they have this open space. And then we're also applying these standards that are made for larger lots that only have one dwelling on them to their smaller lots, to some extent.
You're saying it's an unequal situation and that it needs to be changed, you're suggesting? Isn't that what we're doing here on this proposal?
Yes, so I'm, but what I'm really saying, like, different types of housing can have different rules. It doesn't have to necessarily be that townhomes have to be allowed to have decks. You could decide you don't want townhomes to have decks. I think most people who own a townhome, I think we talked about last time, their kitchen is on their second floor, which of course might raise fire concerns. But they want to go out and enjoy their deck just the same as anyone whose kitchen is on their first floor. Or you enjoy their yard, and they don't want to have to come downstairs and go outside and all that. And I think that's why you're seeing these decks being allowed. The decks would have been allowed to be constructed if they were constructed when the townhome community was built. So it, it, I think it's a decision. A decision has to be made. Are there decks allowed on townhomes? Are we going to say everyone who has a deck is allowed to keep it? No one can, can build a new one? Or are we going to say if, if you've got essentially a yard in your denser development, you can also have a deck in your yard?
Okay, so going back to the grandfathering issue, I know that your idea is that because these weren't permitted originally.
It were permit, some of them, some of them weren't permitted, that's true.
Oh, okay. So the reason why we are not grandfathering the same exact deck over again is because.
Oh, it's not grandfathered in the, the code doesn't grandfather your existing deck. So the grandfathering is specific and it doesn't apply.
The fact that you had a deck and you want to replace it, doesn't mean you can replace it with the same deck. I'm, I'm confused about that.
It's because.
There was no code when they built the deck. That should have been approved, correct?
So my understanding is that the code was in existence when the deck was permitted. Grandfathering is your house was here, it's on thirty thousand square feet, or, or sorry, three thousand square feet. We've decided your lot has to be eight thousand square feet, but we're not going to make you tear down your house. We're going to let you keep your house. We're going to let you do expansions and, and certain things to it. We had code, it's I, myself and the zoning administrator have been through it, and there is no way we can see to interpret it to allow decks on townhomes. That is. So saying everyone who has a deck is allowed to keep their deck and they're allowed to replace it would be creating a grandfathering clause. Everyone who has a deck from before March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four is now grandfathered in with their deck. And I think you come up against a fairness issue that you're going to have when people saying, how come my neighbor can have a deck and I can't have a deck? And saying, well, there's fire hazards, so not everyone can have a deck, isn't going to be a legal or fair kind of way, too. It's either everyone can have them or no one can have them.
What if we said?
From this junk here on.
Every townhome built prior to today can follow these rules of, but what I don't want to happen is the new townhouse communities are now tighter because we're addressing a problem with old townhouse communities. So I don't want that to happen. And then the second thing you said has me concerned is that even this person that came before us tonight trying to build an in-kind deck would not have enough space according to the code that's before us to build that in-kind deck. So that also has me concerned.
Right, so I went back and forth and maybe I should have put this into the memo, but I was expecting to get comments back and then give you a revised memo with, should I choose one hundred feet? Should I choose five hundred, five hundred's a bit much, but one hundred square feet, three hundred square feet? I kind of thought about it and said, okay, let's, let's put a hundred in here and we'll have a discussion about it. So it's a discussion. And I have their permits up here available. I can tell you how many square feet each deck is that they requested. But the reason that I want to have a bottom, a maximum size of that deck is because if you are a townhome and your lot is larger, we do not want to permit you to build a six hundred square foot deck. We want you to be able to have a deck and use your yard. I think that was the, the discussion last time. And do that in a reasonable way without really kind of removing more open space than we want.
So it's not proportional.
So again, that's
Right.
what brings me back to, we have development that occurred over decades. It's very different from each other, and the one size fits all is probably going to cause a problem if, if we're not going to use our capability of interpretation to allow reasonable deck, or we can't, or whatever the reason is. Now we're implementing code for very different areas as a blanket thing, and it's, it's not going to work. We saw this with the RV area and the density. We have, in the RV two area, we have an area that was built at a density of like one house per five acres that received the same density as another area that wasn't built that way. And now the area that's encompassed in, the area that was one housed five acres can get exponentially more dense because we use the same density for each area. And the same thing is going to happen with open space and lot lines and things like that. We're going to need to be more specific to allow the right things and to disallow the right things.
Right, so, I'm sorry, that's what the bottom limit does, the, the, the minimum or the maximum size that you can have a deck, is that it addresses that. The, the, the requirement that it abuts permanent open space ensures that there's space. The minimum or maximum deck size ensures that the decks are not going to be huge and looming over each other. And so it, it does, because townhomes are sort of a, a uniform type of housing, this adjusts to the townhome while having some maximum limits. So it's not I don't know what the decision process was in other zones and density, but was the decision process that we want to see infill rather than sprawl? I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here. But this is designed, if you have a, if you have a townhome, even if, if it has a big yard, you're really not going to have a problem at all to build your deck in the existing code. If you don't, if you have a small yard, we're trying to allow you to build a reasonable deck. There is there is no way what, what I would be doing if I decided to interpret, I am uncomfortable with on a professional level, which would be to say, I am going to go into the standards for townhome development. And then I am going to apply those to individual lots when they come in. It doesn't fit properly because there's all sorts of requirements they can't comply with. It is not, in my interpretation, giving you the decision-making power. It is me deciding what I think should be allowed for decks in Chesapeake Beach, and that is not my place or my role.
So you do saying what you have just said, Sarah, that if we decided on a specific percentage for the decks, then the townhome owner knew or old could have a deck, but it just has to be proportional. They, it, it puts constraints on the fact that, yes, they can have a deck, but it can't be six hundred square feet, even though they have, and this would allow some uniformity for the townhouses, so that everybody can have a deck.
Yes.
But we have some requirements and parameters about the size of the deck.
If they somehow had a lot of, like, if they were a corner lot and had a lot of space that belonged to them, somehow they might be able to legally under the current code have a six hundred square. I, like, I can't guarantee that's not something that's allowed now. What this is just trying to do is let the internal units and some end units that actually I didn't realize there were end units that don't have any side yard in some of the areas. Build, build a deck.
Would you believe in, if we would do this, that this would reduce the burden on the homeowners as well as prevent people seeking variances?
Yes. They, and they would probably have their variances denied because it's a, and the variance is, has to be something that affects them uniquely and not other people in their zone, so.
I have two questions. And it, one of them is, and it wasn't a townhome, but it was a house right there before Heritage Woods. There was a deck collapse, and I believe it's a wooden deck. So wear and tear is going to eventually make all these decks that are wood be replaced. So we're going to have to address whether it's in-kind or whatever, because they're going to have to be replaced at some time in the future. So that's a concern because. So that's a concern because Mrs. Delina, as he said, it's for a safety reason. And I don't know about anybody else, but I would have a problem not putting code in place that it could be, could be fixed. Because if she has people over and they get injured because of this delay or whatever, that would really bother me. The next comment that I had talking about townhomes, Richfield Station in the future is going to have townhomes, I believe, by the trail, right? And isn't that all wooded? So there would potentially be no open space? So would that mean all those townhomes would not have potential decks? Because it's in that wooded area by the trail?
Though it doesn't say abuts permanent open space that belongs to the HOA. It just says that abuts permanent open space. So if it's a forested wooded area, if I'm placing mentally where you're talking about correctly, it's adjacent to like the FIDS area? Or am I, no, I'm placing it in the wrong place?
I don't know, like, I don't know. I just remember, I've gone back on the trail and I know, like, they have all the, it's already all marked where the townhouses are going because the pipes are there. So I just know it's there. I don't know if it abuts the FIDS or not, but I'm just thinking it potentially, it wouldn't be open green space. It would be like lots of forest trees.
So that counts as open space.
That would count as open space, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
But what if that were in turn sold?
So the, the FIDS area is preserved. It's permanent open space, so.
As of right now?
Right.
Permanent open space is permanent open space.
Right, but what if it became something else?
How would that happen?
But let's not, we've, we've been through that. Let's, let's not digress to that. Does anybody have any further questions for Sarah?
I have one question. It's only, but it's not something, so I might have missed something. In number two, it says covered porches as well. And that feel, so could it be a covered deck and cover that area? Or does it have to be an impermeable surface like a deck? Because that's, I feel like in three, where it says like subsection A shall not apply to decks and porches, but would it apply to a covered?
Right, so, we can specifically say in here, we can make an adjustment to the language to say uncovered. It's, it's interesting, the language, because it says covered porches or decks whether covered or uncovered, right? So it's making a distinction between a deck and a porch that.
That's what makes me uncomfortable because then it feels like those decks could become covered and if that would be a different thing, unless I'm missing something. Or I would want it.
No, I hear what you're saying. I definitely hear what you're saying. So I think we can make that adjustment. Let me think about it while you guys.
I would like to address Kelly's issue.
I'm sorry, so going into number four here, F four. Let me just clarify this, just to make sure I understand. So it says, subject to subsections J and M, the minimum open space requirements G, lot provisions of subsection A may be up to ninety percent for decks. So the minimum open space requirements may be up to ninety percent for decks and porches less than a hundred square feet. So I'm trying to, that, I just don't understand what that exactly means. So a porch has to be less than a hundred square feet?
Right, so that was a kind of, I was, I was anticipating a little more back and forth with memo outside of, of the meeting, like to just have questions to be able to respond. So I should have addressed this in the initial one, and I apologize. The, just to clarify, the decks that were addressed in the public comment today are two hundred and eighty-six square feet and three hundred and twenty-eight square feet. I erred on the side of caution in my initial try at this because I was concerned that there would be, three hundred would feel too big, right? I think five hundred is probably a bit large. I think three hundred maybe is a reasonable size. I'm just, I'm, I'm not entirely sure where, where everyone's feelings are. But generally, when I was looking into this, like a hundred feet is a pretty small, it's a pretty small deck. You can put your barbecue grill on it, but you probably can't fit your patio furniture. So the, the, what we discussed was the intent of being able to go out from your kitchen and cook out in the yard or potentially sit on in the yard. And so I guess the question is, do we want to let them put their grill out there? Are their grill and their patio furniture and be able to sit out there? And really, most of the decks are in that, I would say, two hundred to three fifty range that are coming in. Did I answer the question or did I get distracted?
Well, okay, so what I was trying to understand in number four then, so you're saying the minimum open space requirement may be up to ninety percent. They're, they're saying, I'm confused about the wording, I guess, is what I'm confused about. The minimum open space requirement may be up to ninety percent. Would that be the maximum, ninety percent?
Right.
So that would be the maximum, okay, I guess that's the way it's written. I'm a little confused about it. So the maximum is ninety percent, right, is what you're saying?
That's, what's here, I know what, that one of you suggested going to a hundred, so I don't know. But that's what I, ninety percent, you're still going to have some little space at the back of your lot on your property.
Okay, so ninety percent would mean that you would still have some lot between you and the next door neighbor?
No.
Well, okay, so, so like down at Seaview, Seagate, I'm sorry, Seagate, they do have some that extend out to the side.
They're like on an angle.
It's the end unit that has a deck that goes beyond the.
So end, end units are technically allowed to do that if they have a, like, under this zoning ordinance. Depending on the width, like, their, where their lot line is, they can extend.
So that wouldn't, so you would have to include that in here. Because right now, that's not, because right now, it says in here, if you go down, it says something about you have to line up with the side yard. So any projection has to line, that's one of the things you have in here is that it has to, it cannot be, let me see, okay, if you go up to three B, the side of any projection aligned with the side setback of the main building. So theoretically, if, it wouldn't be the code. Am I not seeing, am I not reading this correctly?
No, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
I'm just saying, I, I don't, it's just, it's getting a little bit confusing here the way.
But it is, it is, so it is definitely confusing and it's, it's confusing because like of what's in subsections J, M, all of that. That, that part has to kind of stay the way it is. And that's why it's making it hard to understand what's happening.
So it is, the maximum is the ninety percent, not the, am I, okay, why am I not reading this correctly? The minimum open space requirement, lot provisions may be up to ninety percent. Oh, okay, I'm reading it wrong. Okay, I'm reading it. You're saying, so the ten percent is the maximum, no, excuse me.
Is the minimum amount of open space.
You know, I,
So that would be the maximum. But I'm, but you see how I'm reading it, that this, I'm reading it incorrectly here, I guess.
It's, yeah, maybe up to ninety percent.
No, you may be correct on that.
I, it seems like you should say the maximum amount should be ninety percent.
It may be that, that should say ten percent rather than ninety.
And then porch is less than a hundred square feet.
Well, then it would be no greater than ten percent, right?
Right. I just need to check, like, I, I know there was a lot of me reading some, reading this and then reading each of the subsections and putting it in there. And it is entirely possible that I still made an error. Yes, it should be ten, that should say.
No greater than ten percent?
It should be the opposite.
May, maybe.
Ten percent.
Minimum open space requirements provision may be up to.
Right.
Maybe, yes, maybe. No less than ten percent is what it should say. Sorry.
Porch is less than a hundred square feet. So that, that also doesn't make any sense to me. And porch is less.
For decks and porches that are less than a hundred square feet where they're, so it's, that is putting that minimum, which I think we should talk about whether it's a hundred or three hundred or what.
It would only apply as it currently is if you had a lot that was like a hundred and ten square feet, then.
Right, I mean, I did, I did think about this number, analyze this number a lot and then say, oh, well, they'll give me questions and we'll talk about later. Because I was trying not to put too much in here because it is confusing to read through.
Can I ask another question? Because these are HOAs, do we have to have a number with the square footage of the deck? Or can we allow the HOA to assume that responsibility since they want to look uniform? Is there, I mean, do HOAs and the townhomes have deck sizes listed?
I would not recommend leaving it to the HOA. I have received, some things come in from HOAs. One of, there was a deck that was being constructed outside of the property lines and it had HOA approval when it came to the town. So I think it would be better if we set what the town wants.
But if it's ninety, if we are allowing them up to ten percent, why does it matter to, why does it matter? Because we're allowing them up to ten percent of their open space, right?
We're, we're allowing to reduce, so their open space requirement, that's going to be in a planned community, which is going to be twenty percent. Right now, so they have to have twenty percent open space.
Yeah, that's right.
They're all twenty percent.
But I'm just saying, if we have a, a certain amount that you want as a minimum, a maximum that they're allowed to have, wouldn't it be up to the HOA to direct, okay, you know, here's where the, actually, I, I don't understand why it matters to us what size a deck is if it's within the ninety percent or it's up.
Because some places have really big, some places have really big backyards.
The townhome does?
Some townhomes do, yes.
Well, then we use, we lose uniformity. Well, isn't that up to the HOA, though, to create uniformity? Not for us. Why do we care?
Because then everything will, it, it won't look, to my mind, it will look disjointed if you have like large decks, small decks. I, I think it will just not look like.
Also, can I say, the more important piece to me is also that we want to ideally have twenty percent of open space. So that's why having that other thing keeps that to be the mostly what they have to adhere to then. Is.
That's not going to change the science.
It would, I think, because in this, if you're saying you can go up to ninety percent as long as it's not that big of a backyard. But if we're, if we don't have that hundred foot or what maybe should be three hundred and fifty feet, then we would be saying in even bigger lots, now they can put these really big decks and go up to that ninety percent. And I don't know that that is what we want. So that's the stopgap, like, to keep it.
It's my interpretation of our discussion at the last meeting.
Can I ask a question about the open space? So is the open space on the individual townhouse lots calculated in the open space of the overall development?
No.
It is not. So the overall townhouse development has to subtract the townhouse lots from the land area and then provide twenty percent open space?
No, it doesn't, the townhouses have different requirements. Like, there's a whole section on them. It is M, section M, design standards for townhouses and Motley Family developments for three or dwelling units. So you've got setbacks between buildings. Have building to building setbacks, adjacent property, size and scale, mass, parking, pedestrian accessibility, lighting. Nothing, nothing is specifically addressing.
Well, the table of uses, I imagine, addresses the open space, right? Because it has an open space requirement. That's where the twenty percent came from.
Correct, and, and I, this is, what we're talking about is the difference between a category one and a category two site plan review.
Okay. So I guess that's, you're, what you're saying is the townhouse open space is incorporated the development in section M.
Right, the, the, the open space that gets required and planned all goes through the category one site plan review process.
Right. So I guess my question is, if we were to allow, say, the entire lot, the townhouse can build whatever it wants on its lot or ten percent or ninety percent or whatever, whatever we do. Would you then look at these setbacks to determine if they're still appropriate given that the entire townhouse lot could potentially be covered?
The setbacks in the.
Well, your front, building to building, rear, rear to rear, like.
Right, that, the deck, the decks are going into the building to building setback.
Right, which makes the building to building setbacks, if you count the deck, which that, you know, it is a structure. It's going to make the building to building setbacks seem smaller.
Right, but again, we go back to the abutting permanent open space, right? If you're not abutting permanent open space, but you're abutting another townhome block.
Right, and that's, I guess that's my concern with not grandfathering, not saying this applies to townhomes that were built prior to this day, but not to townhomes that are built after this day.
Because if you have townhouses that are backing up to each other and now they want to fix a deck, but they don't have that open space, how do they get to fix their deck that may or may not have been properly permitted or whatever? But we're worried about that safety issue if we don't have a grandfathering clause.
Okay. I would wonder if this exists, but I'm going to just, it does.
And I don't know.
Are you wondering if that?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, right now, they can't replace their, their deck, so yeah.
Do we have any liability for denying them to replace a deck that's a safety issue?
No. It's not, if, if someone has something unsafe on their property, it is their responsibility to.
Move it.
I think we probably can all agree that we can put it, definitely put in a grandfathering clause at the very least tonight. I'd hope.
I'll work on that.
But would that apply to the only townhouse that?
But would that apply to the only townhouse that doesn't have a deck? In that same row that we're.
Right, yes.
Discussing.
And that's the problem that person would have to, I don't know why we're saying that the variance would be denied. I would say that's an obvious hardship. If all of his neighbors can build a deck, but he can't, I would say that that variance would be approved. But. You know, it's, it is a board of people and they get to make their own decisions, just like everything.
I think if there was a grandfathering clause and there was one person on the lot without a deck, then they would be given a variance. The reason that the gentleman who was here today, if he went before the Board of Appeals for a variance, his situation isn't different than everyone else on his same townhome block. The situation isn't different from any other townhome in a planned community. And that is one of the variance standards, that you need a variance because you cannot get relief through changes to the town's code.
Well, it's different because everybody else had a deck built, but he did not.
Right. What I'm saying is if there was a grandfathering clause, then this person we're talking about can get a variance.
Right.
Yeah. But right now, people can't get a variant.
But if there wasn't a grandfather clause and that individual went to a Board of Appeals and he said it was an undue hardship, you're saying they would probably approve that because he's the only exception.
Yes, except for that, technically, everyone who has a deck can't replace their deck.
Right.
That needs to be fixed.
So when, so when I buy my townhouse, or when I bought my townhouse, and it had a deck. So is there someplace that it says, hey, my deck?
No, that's.
Not in the HOA or anything.
That's why we're here discussing this, is if your HO, if your townhouse came with a deck, the zoning regulations don't actually allow you to replace it.
I see.
Unless I pretend that Design Standards for Townhouses and Multifamilies of Three or More Units applies to your single family lot, which it really does not. And I'm not okay pretending that because it's not how this is meant to be interpreted.
So then what we have to do is ensure that people who have a deck and the deck falls apart, that they will be permitted to have a deck again. Because I would think if we don't, if we don't do that, then we are opening ourselves up to Pandora's box. That everybody, you know, as Commissioner Haunt said, if I have a wooden deck and it's got a finite life and now the deck's gone, and I've got all the patio furniture and I've got all the grill and now I'm told, uh-uh, you've got to go to Plan B because you can't have a deck anymore.
So if Hurricane Isabel came back to visit us again and took out or weakened a bunch of the decks, they would not be able to replace them at this time with this code?
That would be Hurricane Kelly because Isabel's already been.
So the other piece of this is that not everything that gets built has always been permitted, right? So pre, my understanding is that previously the county would issue permits and not alert the town that it had issued permits. And therefore, things maybe had county permits, but the town didn't know they were happening. That has been resolved with the county and the town and everything is flowing extremely smoothly now. But I think the grandfathering clause should say that you can replace it if it was previously permitted by the town. Because if I decide I'm going to go throw up a shed, hope no one notices, and in 10 years when I want to replace it, I'm going to say, oh, I'm grandfathered in, I maybe never had a permit in the first place.
If you were the second or the third homeowner and they bought it and they had a thing, I mean, how do you know that it was not permitted or permitted?
You will have to, you will have to check with the town. So I know of a situation where there is a town that has a stormwater management area. It is a triangle and it is accessible only by a thin strip of land. And that thin strip of land has six sheds in it. So they cannot maintain their stormwater infrastructure.
So in lieu of everything you've said, what is your recommendation for the best way that we can accommodate, like allowing people to rebuild a deck? And, and yet, to my mind, I think it should be uniform. I think there should be uniformity in the, the code. I don't think, I, I disagree with Commissioner Blackwelder. I don't think we should set, we should set code that is one code for this community, one code for that. I, I think that way too many variances. And we can never always address the, the infinitives of possibility. I, I just don't think we can. But what's your recommendation for us to allow people to have their decks? Or is that not possible? What would your recommendation be to accommodate as many of these attributes as possible?
Right. So this, this initial, this language is what I think will permit as much as possible. I am typing a grandfathering clause along the lines of any deck that was constructed with proper permitting prior to insert the date. Will maybe replaced in kind.
Can we include something that says, or sufficient evidence that a structure was in existence? Something like that, you know, if they have pictures or if they have, because you don't want somebody to throw up a deck, say, oh, I already had this. And even though that's not going to happen, we're talking about eaches here and, and eaches are going to drastically reduce the open space that we achieved in the one section. That's what's going to happen. By addressing it this way without a date that points to things that were built previously and not to things.
That's why I said properly permitted.
Right. But, but we, we live in a town that, that there's lots of old structures that people just built stuff and people, people buying those houses or, or selling those houses or whatever, they don't, they don't know any better. They don't know what was permitted. They don't know what wasn't permitted. They know they had a deck or they had a porch and they think it's permitted. And I don't believe in taking those things away from those people.
So I just want to address that, which is that is something that happens all the time when you're a homeowner. You buy a house, you find out that your dishwasher is attached to a water line that is not appropriate. And someone comes and inspects it and you're not allowed to have this anymore. That is, it, it is an unfortunate thing that happens with building codes, with all of this to homeowners regularly. And it, home, first time home fire instructions and educations are trying to address that type of thing. And, and it does, it's, it's not fun to be in that place. But I think that this, that zoning code and planning and what you all are doing is about what your community looks like, how the built-in environment contributes to a sense of community. You know, whether people, obviously, people have to be allowed some reasonable use of their home and their, their property. So it, it's not really that it's incumbent on you to make sure it's fair that someone slapped up a shed and, or a deck and then sold it and that deck wasn't allowed. The new homeowner, now someone's saying this deck wasn't allowed, it wasn't permitted. They don't know. They still have to go, they still have to pay fines at the county, go through the process of getting it permitted. Maybe find out it wasn't put up up to code and it's unsafe. And, and it's good for them to find out that rather than get her on their deck.
Well, I mean, that's the truth in the, the, where I live, you know. Now, to rebuild my house on that property, I probably, for example, my neighbor has a pool. I probably wouldn't be able to put a pool because of the current status of, of the hillside. And, you know, and I think, I think you're right. I mean, we, we've said the same, we said, the, this commission has said, you know, previously, people could build 70 feet in, in this, you know, town center. Now we're saying 35 feet. But that's the way because things have changed. So of course, you know, sure, before I could, but now you can't. And I think we have to look at that and I understand your point.
Is there a possibility that, you know, when you look at, if you go to M, let's see here, how do I look at this? It would be 3M, I guess you would call it, on Design Standards for Townhouses and Multifamily Developments, three or more dwelling units. When we went through and amended all this on 20, in 2023, we, you know, it, the purpose of setbacks between buildings, and I know it's between buildings, but when you expand to 90%, that's also going to expand in all directions, right? Not just, not just out towards the open space, but it's going to expand it to the side too, right? So in other words, when you say expanding the amount of decking you can have, 90% of that backyard, you're, you can expand it to the side as well as to the, to the back. You're not just saying to the back, you're saying to this, so you're basically expanding to your next door neighbor as well. So possibly, right?
Right. So here is how I have been permitting townhome decks that do not encroach into the rear yard.
Could you speak a little louder?
Here is how I have been, the townhome decks that do not encroach into the rear yard, like, so townhome decks encroach into the side setbacks. They do everywhere, all over town. And to try to keep this situation under control for everyone, what I am able to do with these setbacks is say, okay, M treats each block as a house. Previously, that has been to say that the side setbacks do not apply to the middle units. That has been how it has been interpreted. But previously, the rear setbacks and the lot coverage on, on permits that were in process when I came in were being held to the line. Since this treats each unit like it's a block, if you have a middle unit, I have permitted that even though it is in the side setbacks. That is what, that, I, I don't love that. That's why I want to fix that. But I feel okay making that interpretation because you're not actually doing anything that doesn't exist, right? Already, everyone's sharing a wall. Everyone's agreed, everyone can share a wall here. The, to go back to the, the decks that come out on the corner lots, this is actually saying, if you have a corner lot, your deck does need to end at your building line, which I think, well, I obviously put it in there because it helps keep the intent of the design standards of M, which is to create sort of a, a uniform and attractive appearance at the front of the lot, to have open space at the back of the lot, so that you're having that community feel. I believe decks contribute to a community feel in your backyard and it's not what everyone's looking at when they drive up.
Okay, that wasn't actually what I was talking about. What I'm, if you go to purpose. Yes. The purpose of setbacks is to ensure that residents in the community and surrounding area will receive sufficient light and air and will be able to maintain privacy and freedom from disturbances within the area. Now, so when I'm thinking of the bottom floor of a townhouse, and if you have your neighbor putting up decks to 90% of their property, you will be restricting some of that light and air and all the things that we're talking about in that first sentence by giving them more decking so that when the sunlight's coming through, you're going to keep the next door neighbor from getting some of that lighting. You're basically going to have another roof line covering that theoretically with 90%. If everybody takes the 90% and goes all the way, 90% on, on all the sides and even in the back, as you don't say in here, just going to the rear, you're saying 90% of the entire backyard, right?
No, because it's subject to what's above, right? So it's subject to the subsection J and M and all of that, but also, so, so number three, subject to all of this, if your deck or porch, sorry, is less than 120 square feet for a townhouse or the single family attached dwelling, subject to the following, that the, you've got the open space, that any, that the side of any projection align with the side setback of the main building. So yes, if you're on a, a middle unit, you're, I got close to that. If you're a middle unit, yes, you're going to your side setbacks, but if you're an end unit, you're, you're stopping there. If, if there weren't decks all over the townhomes in Chesapeake Beach right now, I feel like we'd be having a different conversation. So if you happen to be that one person, like one of these people who doesn't have a deck, right now, you have no, no light and airflow in your backyard. That is absolutely correct. And your only solution, right, to regaining that is to build your own deck. So I think your point is correct and we have a situation where applying it makes it actually unfair because they already have had their light and air taken.
So is it possible then, because what we're worried about are all the people that have either had a deck or want a deck because their neighbors have all had a deck. Is there a possibility of just saying that anybody that, without having to change the entire, because we originally had, was it 20, it's, it's 80%, right? We had it up to 80% for, or.
Lot coverage was 80%.
80% for the townhome. I think that's standard. Isn't that usually standard throughout the towns? I mean, I, when I was looking through other towns, it's pretty standard with townhomes. It seems as though we should retain what we had and just grandfather all the ones that were previously, either they want, you know, to change it or they want to, you know, or they're, and, and if some person then wants to build a deck and he wants to make it like his neighbors, I think a variance certainly would be passed at that point because every other person's got that same deck. But why change the entire code when what we're trying to do is just provide grandfathering options to the people who've already had a deck or want to replace it or whatever? We don't really want them to extend it. We don't want these people just, oh my gosh, now I can go from this size to now I can just, you know, expand it all. We don't want, we don't want to encourage that.
Right. Well, that's what the minimum or the maximum size is addressing as well, right? If, if we do what you said, right? And in this block of townhomes right here, they all happen to have decks and this block doesn't. Now, this block wants to know, well, they all have decks. I don't understand why we can't have decks. What's different? And, and it's not consistent, right? What, how can we be consistent? These are the questions I ask to myself. How can we allow decks of some size but not letting them get out of hand and huge and taking up the whole lot on lots that are small where there are already decks? And.
Can we add a, a thing that says, something to the effect of, because all of these townhomes that we're talking about already have, most of them already have decks, correct? It's just a few of them that are being replaced or, I'm trying to understand.
There's a lot of, of three out of five have them. Everyone except for me has them. I haven't seen one that is the first person on their townhome block to ask for.
So can we add a provision where, you know, 70% of the decks are of this square footage? So it has. So, it has to stay in that square footage? Or is there any way that we can, instead of allowing all future townhomes to have a 90% coverage of their backyard?
No more than 300 square, whatever square feet we say.
Well, I don't know, did we come up with a number? I don't know that we did. But I'm just, and then, and then do you not allow for a double deck? Because I noticed that in Seagate, for example, they have a second deck up on top. Would you allow them to connect it with a staircase or with anything? Or any kind of an option of that? I mean, where do you, do you, do we put a thing in there that says only one deck allowed, or, I mean?
That is a slightly different, because that's, is that, that's not a self-supporting deck.
It's not, but, I mean, I have a double deck. I mean, I have a deck that's, you know?
It's really a balcony.
It is a balcony, but I mean, could you, you know, connect it? I'm just saying, you know, do you have to accommodate for that as well? I mean, I don't know, I don't, that's a whole nother issue. I'm coming back to the idea that do we want to change it for all the townhomes in the future that will be built, and there's going to be a lot of them? Do we want them all to have that 90% coverage of their, of their backyard? I don't know, that's what I'm asking. Or do we want to keep it at the 80% and just go back and try and repair, you know, the prior issues that we have with a grandfather clause?
Do some quick math.
And I go back to that purpose, which was, you know, to ensure that residents, blah, blah, blah.
May I have a question?
I, I'm trying to do math, and that's not my strong suit. I think we're also talking about a very small amount of square footage when we're talking about this difference between 80 and 90 that still has to be under 350 square feet. Like, I think we're talking about like 30 square feet. And so, if we change it to 90 to allow these things that still can't be over 350 square feet, like, we?
350 or 300?
Where did we come up with 350?
Well, I was just saying, she said that would cover almost anyone who has a relatively small lot, who wants to go from 80 to 90% coverage. We're talking about not that much space when we have that limit. So, I just don't think that it's that frightening as long as we have that square footage piece that she said to put in. Like, just to keep that in perspective, that we're not talking about huge differences in these, yeah.
We're not allowing massive decks. That's why the maximum, the maximum size prevents everyone from going to 90%. Because most townhomes that I have seen so far apply for permits do not have a problem with the lot coverage issue. It, and you mentioned something else that I wanted to answer, and it.
So, if we change the open space on a lot, what is stopping a new developer from just building the house bigger and making a very small deck?
They're not, this, this applies only to decks.
Right. But the open space require, is, applies to the whole lot, right? Say somebody's building new.
No, this, this amendment that I proposed applies specifically for decks and porches less than 350 square feet, where there are no other accessory uses.
Right, that's why I wanted the piece that says they cannot be covered, and that like keeps.
Right, no, I'm going back to Cindy's argument, which she made very well, and I agree with. Why would we derail the code that we put in place to accommodate something that is an issue for as-built scenarios? And so, my question is, you have a blank, you know, you have a blank slate, townhouse development, they have lots. And now, we're saying you can use 90% of your lot, so you only have 10% open space?
No.
Okay, what are we saying?
We're saying that a deck or porch can cause you to go up to 90% of your lot.
So, they have to have 20% based on the structure and add a deck? Then they can add a deck?
If, if you have 20% based on your structure, and then you're adding a deck, I just can't see how, it's really a balcony.
That's, and that's my point. Why, like, what's stopping the builder from just maximizing or reducing the open space that was kind of built into the code? Because he could go further into the setbacks that were.
But only with decks.
A category one site plan review.
Right.
That's the answer to your question.
But then, now we're in the arbitrary situation.
No, we're not, we're not, because M applies. M is what applies to design standards for multifamily developments of three or more dwelling units. This, this is what applies when you are coming before us with a townhome development.
I, I guess I'm back to my question of, if we're going to increase what is covered on an individual townhouse lot, do we need to then look at these setbacks and increase them so that there's the same amount of open space as we had anticipated before?
If you adopted this in 2023, there were decks in the townhomes when you made this decision?
Right.
Yes.
Right, we, we want decks on the townhomes, and this, this is a new thing, that people can't build decks on their townhomes. I don't think that, I think people have rebuilt decks on their townhomes, and now this is a new thing, and they can't rebuild them. And we definitely want to address that problem by the code. I just, I, I am of Cindy's mind that says we address these things on as-built scenarios, and we leave what we passed in place for new builds. That, that's my feeling on it. But, you know, we, we do need to pass something to alleviate the new problem that we're not letting people rebuild their decks.
Right, because that is not how, that is not how the code is written. The code is not written to allow people to build decks on townhomes.
Oh, um, yeah.
So, are our two scenarios at this point to move forward to say, can we like make them, if somebody wanted to make a motion to say, he, let's do a grandfathering clause or a motion to kind of change it more as Sarah had suggested? Like, to decide which of those directions we want to move? Is that the, is that like where we're standing?
Yeah, I think you're right about that.
Sarah, you, you put in there that if they had the proper permits, what do you consider proper permits?
We can, we can say town and county permits.
What if they just have the county?
And they don't have the town permit, and we said town and county permits.
I mean, we could also change it to say town or county if we want to say, like, if they got it from county, and that does seem like you were trying to dot your i's and cross your t's, like, okay, we're going to let that slide. You tried, we had the problem. I mean, possibly, right?
I, from this perspective of speaking with staff and have, like, having things flowing properly, having it say town and county will reinforce. What's happening is that people have done things without permits. It's very loose, so the, the message to the residents of Chesapeake Beach is, if you want to do something on your lot, please come talk to us so we can issue you a permit. We do not want to issue you a fine later. This reinforces that.
Okay, so, sorry, I was going to make a motion.
Okay, please do.
I would like to move that we allow the grandfathering of decks that were built with a permit by county and/or the town of Chesapeake Beach, county of, a county or by the, and/or by the town of Chesapeake Beach, to re-build their deck as, as identified in the permit.
We have any and/or, or just the?
That would be the only thing I'd want to do right now.
County and town.
And/or town of Chesapeake Beach.
That allow more flexibility?
And can you read that again?
I can read it back, I was typing while you were talking.
Or you can add to it if you'd like.
It says, the grandfathering of decks that were built with a permit by the county and/or the town of Chesapeake Beach to rebuild their decks as identified in the permit.
Do we need to have a date on that, by a certain date?
It should probably be the date that the ordinance is adopted.
That's one, okay, so, so do you need to have by blank date added to that motion?
Date of approved.
Rebuild their deck as identified in the permit.
Presented.
That's, that is, one of them will, one of them.
Because she was not built with a permit.
Well, we should at least have one motion for the grandfathered, for the ones like at Seagate, we should at least have a motion for that. But at least have that done immediately, because we, we do have decks that need that.
Okay.
That grandfathering immediately.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If, in that same row of townhouses that, that the gentleman presented to us, what is our process to figure out if they got permits or not? I mean, are we going to go?
That's not the role of the planning gentleman.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the situation is we're going to find that somebody did not do permits. So, what is our responsibility? If we say they have to have permits from the county in Chesapeake Beach, then how do we know? Is somebody going to check the?
Well, they would have to come through the, the town planner, and they would have to show they have permits. Whether they had them before or not is, is, to my mind, it's immaterial. They've got to have a permit nailed to get the deck they want.
But I thought we were.
Oh, so.
I have a second on the motion.
Do you want me to read it with the insert date piece?
Yeah, I think you should have a date on there.
But I can't make a motion, so I say it, and then you say you move whatever I say.
May I have a black baller has seconded the motion?
Okay, now we can discuss it.
Okay, so, ad language that allows for the grandfathering, because there's going to have to be some subject to subsections of decks that were built with a permit by the county and/or the town of Chesapeake Beach prior to insert the date of adoption to rebuild their deck as identified in the permit.
For a town, for a home that's 30 years old, we don't know whether it has a permit.
Right, that was my point.
And, and even if, even if the town has some records, we don't know they have all the records. So, so a home that was built with the proper permit 30 years ago may or may not be able to prove that he has a permit.
Which is what the rest of the, which is what the language, the rest of the language that I have drafted is doing.
So, can you read that to us right now, since we're?
Right, so, okay, so the, the changes that are recommended for projections into required yards are under 29019F. Number two would read, covered porches over 35 square feet or decks, whether covered or uncovered, shall not be permitted in the setbacks required by subsection A, except as allowed in this subsection F3 below. Subject to subsections J and M, the setback requirements of subsections A shall not apply to accessory signs or off-street parking spaces. Three, subject to subsections J and M, the minimum side yard setback E, minimum rear yard setback F. Lot provisions of subsection A shall not apply to the deck, to decks and porches less than 120 square feet for a townhouse or other single-family attached dwelling, subject to the following, that the rear lot line of the subject property abuts permanent open space, B, that the any, that, that the side of any projection align with the side setback of the main building, C, notwithstanding A or B, no deck or porch shall be permitted in the front yard setback. Subject to subsection, sorry, four, subject to subsections J and M, the minimum open space requirement G, lot provision of subsection A, may be no less than 10% for decks or porches less than 350 square feet when there are no other accessory uses on the lot where a townhouse or other single-family attached dwelling is cited, provided that the law abuts permanent open space in common ownership of the owners of the adjacent lots.
What does that have to do with who has a permit and who doesn't? I'm really getting.
If you don't, if you don't have a permit, like, we've grandfathered in people. If you didn't already have a permit, then you can build it, subject to all of this.
Could we add to that motion? Or could somebody amend the motion to include decks that had already been built and need to be repaired that weren't permitted? Can we just add that and just allow all decks? All right, let me rescind that emotion. If I, if I can rescind that motion, I would, I would change it to be any deck built prior to the date it's approved by the town council, all decks that had been built should be allowed to be rebuilt if they're in disrepair. Something, because I think what happens with yours is that now we're committing all of our new decks to cover 90% of the lot. Well, or, okay, or up to 350, it depends on the size.
Yes.
Depends on the size, but I'm assuming that they're all going to be, you know, I'm assuming the worst, I guess. I always like to assume the worst when I'm in planning mode here, because the worst will happen. So, I, I'm just thinking that way.
What if on, you keep your motion, the one that you made, and then I were to make a motion that said additionally?
Remend my motion?
For townhomes that were built prior to the adoption of this ordinance, then we can adopt every single word of Sarah's language to apply.
Okay. Okay, I see that.
That makes sense?
So, there's not a discussion of permitted or unpermitted?
Right, we're adopting all of her language for townhomes that were built prior to the adoption of our ordinance.
That makes more sense. You see what we're concerned about here?
I do. Yeah, I guess it, it will potentially become an issue once a new townhome community is built, but yes.
An issue in regards to that, about the permit?
Right, but it's not an issue right now. And this is, what we need to do is resolve the issue we're having right now, because it's, it's, it's a problem. So, if I can make sure I understand, we're going to take the motion that was just made with whatever technical modifications I need to make and actually stick it at the top of my language, and instead of my language amending F, it's actually going to be its own new letter, I don't know what letter right now, stipulating all of these regulations for specifically townhouses or other single-family attached dwelling units.
Yes.
Meaning decks?
For decks, yes.
Okay. And will we remove the parameters of? And will we remove the parameters of whether they were originally permitted 30 years ago or not? By the language?
That wasn't part of the motion.
I would say that if you're going to remove the permitting regulation, you might want to insert today's date.
Insert what?
Today's date. Today's date. Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Because, because.
Yeah.
Sorry. Because you could, it, put a deck up right now without a permit and then it would get grandfathered in. That's why you.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So, as of today, March 27th?
Okay, so are you going to keep in about the covered porch? Because I think you, we made a great point here about the covered porches, et cetera. Were we going to change the covered porch idea?
If you motion to do that, I will add that language into here.
Okay. Your, your point was about being pervious versus impervious, or what was your point about that?
That would be the rationale, but I just. It does feel like then you're building out your house.
Oh, room.
Just, yeah.
So, we want to eliminate the word covered porches or whatever, whether covered or not. So, we want to eliminate that, I, because I, I agree with you on that. So, on number two, we also want to eliminate?
We just want to say porches?
Um, I think you actually want to add this number three.
Add two to three?
To, to number two is actually, is good. It, it, it's, it's, it's serving, it's serving a purpose for the rest of the code.
Okay.
What you want to do is, on really three and four, you want me to specifically say that it only applies to uncovered.
So, would it be 3D? You would add a D to that, 3D?
No, I think it says lot provisions of subsection A shall not apply to deck and.
Subsection, subsection J and M, minimum lot, here, shall not apply to decks and, to uncovered decks. It's just adding one word, I think.
Uncovered decks and uncovered porches?
It only, yeah, uncovered.
Single de, how about single decks? Because I'm still bugged about the fact that it could be a double deck.
To an uncovered deck or porch.
So, what happens to the gentleman that was here tonight, the second client, who's the only one in a row that doesn't have a deck?
He could still build it, it's just a porch.
He could still build it, but he can only build to the 80% line, not to the 90% line.
Is that what we're saying?
That is what is being said here.
It would have to get a variance.
He.
Okay, I'm just, I just want to be clear.
He can still build it.
If he was granted the variance, yeah.
Well, he would. I thought that if, oh, because your language didn't accommodate his needs.
Oh. It's your grandfathering language, actually. We can change your grandfathering language to fix it. So, the grandfathering language says grandfathering of decks that were built prior to. But if you change the grandfathering, um, language to say for, for townhome or other single-family attached dwelling communities that were built before.
Exactly.
The adoption of this ordinance, then that will solve that problem.
Okay. So, how should, okay, so let's redo that motion entirely because I know we're getting all confused with our minutes here. So, say that, so you're, you did a great job with that. So, for all?
So, let me type it out quick so that I can read it back.
And then we also had a discussion about how big the deck could be. And I think I agree with maybe Rachel that now that it's only applying to previously built things, it can be bigger than the 100 square feet.
Right, so.
I thought it was, the average was 300 square feet was a reasonable size there.
His, right, his decks, I think you said were 280 and?
And 387.
286 and 328.
Right, so those are going to be the same size, I imagine, as the rest of the decks in that townhouse row on Bayview Hills. So, if we want our amendment to accommodate that, go up to, go up to at least those sizes.
Three, whatever.
I mean, I'd been saying 350 because that felt like a nice even number versus being like 328 because we know this way.
Oh, I'm, I'm very specific. I would say either 300 or 350.
Yeah.
Whatever you guys.
Does it have to say less than 350?
It had, it.
Is the deck, is the deck that he's requesting 350?
No.
No, it's 328. 328.
25.
28.
328 and 286, right?
Okay.
15 would be 300.
If you could in your motion give me permission to ensure that the technicalities and intent are correct. Do you know what I'm saying? So that I can make sure that?
Yes.
Anything we changed actually meets the need. Right.
Yes, you're changing, um, the 90 to 10 and you're changing the 100 to 350. Is that what you're doing there and then?
You, you guys are going to decide what number that is.
But everything else, I think, would be fine then if you wanted to change that in that motion. So, how it, so when you typed it up, how does it read then?
So, gram, "Language for grandfathering of townhouses or single-family attached dwellings that were built prior to, to rebuild a deck or porch as identified." But this, right now it says to rebuild a deck or porch as identified in the permit.
And uncovered. And uncovered.
To rebuild an uncovered deck.
Single deck. I like single deck frankly because I'm a little schizy about that. But anyway, just uncover, you want to say uncovered deck, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, that's, well, this is what I.
Okay, that's fine.
You guys.
That's fine.
What is, the uncovered is further down in the?
Okay, go ahead.
Do you want me to read everything I have?
Please.
Okay, so. Section two would allow porches and decks to be permitted, uh, or sorry, yes. Now, we're grandfathering, we don't need section two anymore. So, three, "Subject to subsection J and M, the minimum side yard setback E, minimum rear yard setback F. Lot provisions of subsection A shall not apply to an uncovered deck or porch less than 300 square feet of a town, for a townhouse other than single-family attached dwellings, subject to, or, or other single-family attached dwellings, subject to the following: A, that the rear lot line of the subject property abuts permanent open space; B, that the side of any projection align with the side setback of the main building; C, notwithstanding A or B, no deck or porch shall be permitted in the front yard setbacks; four, "Subject to subsections J and M, the minimum open space requirement G, lot provisions of subsection A may be no less than 10% for decks and porches less than 300, I should say uncovered decks and porches no less than 300 square feet when there are no other accessory uses on the lot where a townhouse or other single-family attached dwelling is sighted, provided that the law abuts permanent open space in common ownership of the owners of the adjacent lots."
Okay, so we had it, if they were built prior to today's date. Is that what you're saying, today's date?
Yeah, we can go back to being.
And you said 300, but we meant 350, or are we, are we trying to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm, you meant 350? Okay, so just say that with 350. I changed it. I'm doing it right now. Okay. Done.
Do we want to also incorporate anything about, um, if the HOA has any other rules that they would supersede this rule or no? Or just leave the HOA out of it? Okay, I'm good, I'm good with that.
Do we have a?
Um, what about if it's a critical area? Is that any different than anything else that we, you know, if it butts up to the critical area as opposed to?
Right, so critical area is going to be a little different because it has like impervious surface and mitigation requirements.
We have to have a certain sized slats, that you have certain amount of water going through the slats?
So, that is, is a, another thing about decks, right? If you build your deck with slats, it does not count towards impervious surface. I have concerns about that, but. I have concerns about that because I think sometimes people do that and then they throw gravel underneath it without really getting a permit to do that and all of a sudden you actually have impervious surface under your deck.
Right.
But that's not really tonight's conversation.
So, we don't want to add anything to this language that would include critical area?
Critical area regulations will still apply.
So, do we have a second on this motion?
I can it.
And let's vote. All in favor? All opposed? There's no opposition? Motion's passed?
Okay. We never dealt with, uh, five decks and other projections for lots with grandfathered non-conforming side setbacks.
The, right, this was, and, and this is not as pressing of an issue.
No, I, I hope not.
But what it's kind of saying is if you have a grandfathered lot, then you don't need a variance for your deck as long as it's staying in your, staying along your building line. That's.
I think we should address this as well, so then we could complete this.
So, this is really more for larger homes, so that's why the 450. And it's just basically making it so if you have a grandfathered lot that has a side setback of three feet, you don't have to come for a variance to put a deck on your, on the back and the rear of your lot.
Yeah, and it's very, very small deck, so this, this is an easy thing to pass.
Do we have a motion and have a second so we can discuss it?
Can I, can I first ask a question? Do stairs pertain to any of this at all? Like to the thing that we were just talking about? Do we have to deal with stairs?
In that 450?
No, I'm talking about the prev, the prior, the townhome, you know, the prior issue. We didn't talk about stairs, which adds square footage.
Right, which is covered, lot coverage.
So, that's going to be part of their lot coverage then, is the stairs?
Stairs are part of your lot coverage, yes.
Okay, which means your deck is going to be smaller to accommodate the stairs.
Not all decks have stairs.
That is true, but the ends, of course, will. While at least at Seagate, I think the ends all had stairs. But some of the time, you know, you want stairs going down to that, you know, sometimes you'll see a little staircase going down there. I'm just asking before we move on, do we need to add something about stairs?
I think.
Or is that going to complicate?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary that the stairs are specifically addressed at some point, but they won't supersede what you're trying to do here.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
So, number five? The decks and other projections for lots with grandfathered, non-conforming side setbacks. Do we want to accept this, the number five, for any dwelling subject to subsections D, subject to subsection J, the provisions of subsection A, comma, minimum side yard setbacks E, shall not apply for an uncovered deck or porch in the rear yard that is less than 450 square feet, provided that the setback of the deck or porch align with the side setback of the main building and all other setbacks and lot coverage requirements are met.
Is that your motion?
Yes. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
Why 450?
My sort of research got to 500 as kind of a big deck. You aren't, you are wanting to let people do something without coming for a variance, but like much larger decks that sometimes turn into additions or all that other type of situation. You, you want to have some control with variances in, in that over. So, 450 felt like you can still, you know, put up a deck that you can use and enjoy without having to come for a variance. But if you want to do something really big or fancy or whatnot that might have more impact, then you have to ask for a variance. That's, that was my thought process.
Why is it different than of where you had 350?
Because.
This 450?
Yeah, because this isn't a townhome. So, townhome is a tighter, yeah. Right. So, the dwelling has to be subject, so the dwelling has to be subject to subsection D, which is the, the grandfathering clause for single family. Sorry, let me.
So, this pertains to single family?
It's, it's, yeah.
Not townhouses.
It, it pertains to the grandfathering clause, so D is exceptions to minimum lot sizes and widths. Just like if there's two adjoining lots and they don't meet the requirements, they have continuous frontage and are in single ownership, then they're not considered non-compliant. And then, um, any, in a district where there's a single-family dwelling that, things so far, dwellings are permitted, subject to the above, in which the lot is recorded prior to May 26, 1972, is insufficient as to the lot area or lot width. Single-family detached dwelling may be constructed on such a lot regardless of the requirements of this chapter with regard to the lot area, lot with setbacks, but conforming to all other regulations of the district in which the lot is located, provided at the time. So, it says, if you got a single-family on a lot, home on a lot that doesn't conform, you can rebuild exactly that on your non-conforming lot, should you want to. So, we're saying if that applies to you, then you also can add a deck. Did I get confusing again? No, okay, sorry.
Okay. Any further questions?
So. So, this is on a single dwelling home that wants, it's a, a gr, a non-conforming?
With regard to, it's non-conforming with regard to lot width and setbacks, but conforming to all other regulations of the district. And this only allows them to enter into side setbacks.
Where, where does it say that it's, uh, grandfathered?
So, it, it, this is said, "For any dwelling subject to subsection D." And subsection D is the grandfathering of non-conforming lots. There's a lot more to it, but if you go to 290-19-D in your zoning code, oops.
19-D. And, uh, exceptions to minimum lot sizes and lot widths.
And this is, it's, talks about lots that are non-conforming and it talks about, um, dwellings that were, or lots that were recorded prior to May 26, 1972.
So, that's the grandfather clause?
Right. So, this new section only applies to lots. lots that qualify under subsection D. That seemed the simplest way to do it.
Further questions? And we've seconded, so vote. All in favor for acceptance?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. No aye, no unanimous. All right. Memo one. Accomplished. Okay, so. I can see by the clock on the wall that it is 8:10. Are we going on to the next item?
Madam Chair, I would move adjournment.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Excellent. Duly noted. Before we adjourn, I just would like to update you on the, just a few items, and one of them is that Tree City, that Chesapeake Beach has now been named a Tree City, and soon that we will get signs. Green Committee worked very hard to get this accomplished, so the town has been recognized with this name now, so. And also, I, the other item I wanted to talk to you about, and just to give you an update, is the Board of Education MOU. And regarding to the tennis courts, so. The MOU was returned to the Board of Education after town, after the town council indicated their requirements, and that was in 2022. So the town council disagreed with the limitations placed on the use of the court at the time that the Board of Education draft MOU was presented. And one of their, their concerns by the town council was that the restriction. The Board of Education obviously wants no one to use the tennis courts during school hours, obviously for security reasons. And so the town council had an issue with that. Obviously, if they're paying for it, they would like to have free use of that. So that had, that had been returned to the Board of Education. So the Board of, of Education was supposed to return the MOU at the end of February with their final revisions. As of right now, that hasn't been accomplished. But FYI, the Board of Education owns the land that the courts are on and would continue to own the land if the MOU is executed. Approximately $200,000 is needed to repair and refurbish the courts, and I think that's a low estimate. It's cracked, really, it needs to go down to the basic framework and. Yes. And that estimate is several years old, so you can expect that that's probably, I would think, doubled. But the town, if the town entered into the MOU on the courts, it would go out for a formal sealed bid. So the Board of Education is requesting that the town fully fund the project. Want us, obviously, to pay. And the Board of Education would continue the restrictions on the court by members of the public, non-school hours, and no access during school day or any, or during any operation of the school, such as summer school, so that was. So there's another option, and there was discussion about Calum Fields building. I think right now there is looking at a different site. Now, if not, Calum's has been discussed and a court on the preliminary, preliminary plan on the tot lot is smaller and would likely only accommodate a pickleball, but not a tennis court. So there's consideration, I mean, certainly that's a big restriction as far as any school operation, which would mean in the summer. So if they have summer school going on and, you know, I don't certainly know the parameters of summer school, is it six weeks, is it 12 weeks, is it, is it, you know, daycare, which would be an operation? And that would vary, that would absolutely limit the use of the tennis court. So anyway, at this juncture, we are waiting back to see what the Board of Education has come with the MOU after the town council identified the restrictions and their concerns. So that's what we're waiting to hear. Latest and greatest from.
Can I comment on that?
Can I stop you? Yes, you may comment on that.
Thank you. So those tennis courts have been used in the manner described by the MOU as long as I can remember. And I remember very far back because my grandmother, because I'm old, for one, I'm old, and I've been coming to Chesapeake Beach since I was a child. So those tennis courts have been in existence. They are an amenity for our town residents. And we receive open space money and all kinds of money for recreational purposes every year. Get a portion of that. And there's no reason why the town council should not make it a priority to retain the amenities that we. They do not have a mandate to lose amenities to save money. They have, they're charged with stewardship of our town. They inherited a town that functions in a certain way. And one of the easiest things that they could do is make sure that those tennis courts were preserved. That is, it, it too easy. And we just bought a property behind Town Hall. It's at somebody's old house. It's for flooding that I have never seen on Town Hall or whatever, they, they have not even told the public what it's for. And here we have an amenity that people use, that's been in use, that is, is part of our comprehensive plan. We identified it as part of our recreational assets as a planning commission. We asked the Board of Education to keep the tennis courts on their site plans. We asked, the town asked them to do that. And they accommodated it. They're giving us a, a piece of land that our community can use for recreation. And I do not understand why the town council is now saying, no, we won't pay for that. We will instead let our residents go without that recreational opportunity. We'll fund everything else. We'll fund things that we don't need right now, or in 10 years, or in 20 years, but we won't find, fund the recreational needs of our town citizens.
I don't, I don't think that they're saying that. I think the town council had an issue with the limitation of the hours of use by the town. So I think that they're well aware. The, the commission presented to the mayor, and I've had a discussion with the mayor about the commission's interest in keeping and having the tennis courts as an amenity for the town. And the mayor is very aware that we wanted the tennis courts, that we did not want pickleball courts. We wanted the tennis courts because you can play pickleball on a tennis court, but not vice versa. So I, I think the, the mayor and obviously the town council are aware of the commission's interest. I don't think the town council is saying they don't, that we're going to forego the, the tennis courts. I think what they're saying is they don't like the restriction. Whether enough of the town council members will join together to still approve the MOU, I don't know. But the other thing is, and this is something that the, you know, the commission might want to look at, is there another site that we identify that could have the, could have the tennis courts that would not have the restriction?
I have no problem recommending that we add additional courts somewhere. But this particular town council doesn't have a very good track record of building things for the community. Everything is delayed. We're losing amenities in droves. This is a very easy thing that they can do for their residents, and they should do it.
An issue with the restrictions? You're saying if we have to accept restrictions, we want the tennis courts?
Yes, because having the tennis courts leveled is a restriction 24 hours a day.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
So yes, that, that is, that is my point. And, and everybody in the community understands and works with the restrictions very peacefully. Literally, all they have to do is write a check, if that's what's required. And I do think it's a fair thing for them to do, given all of the hardships that the BOE is under right now with budget cuts and a blueprint.
So it will go before the town council. The MOU is coming back, it will go before the town council, and we certainly will have an additional opportunity to, again, but I, you know, in speaking with the, the town administrator, they, you know, it was recommended we write a letter, and I said, we've already written a letter. We've made, the commission has made their position known that we value this resource, we want it for the community. So I think that's been clear, it's, it's part of the record.
So was it a, for the town council? They all agree that that restriction was on it?
No.
What happens if, if the Board of Education holds to having that? Are they going to say, pound sand, we don't want the tennis court?
No, my understanding, it was not that, the entire town council. There were a few council members who had concerns about the restricted hours, so. And I guess they, they, town councils, they offered it back to the Board of Education to see what could be done about their, their, what they felt were constraints. So we'll see what the MOU said.
It would be nice for the community to know who those town council members were. And this is the problem with making these big decisions like the water park or letting the tennis courts get leveled without a vote. Because people would pay attention to that vote.
Well, they'd.
Cause the tennis courts to be removed.
They haven't been removed, they weren't removed with the.
Right, but.
It's a change, it sounds.
Well, they wanted, I mean, the MOU, it's an agreement between both parties, so of course, they, the town council as well, the Board of Ed, both have requirements that they want. So I, I mean, my understanding, with any MOU, anytime you've got to work it out so that, you know, it, it works for both of those entities.
This one is two years old.
I, I understand.
It's two years old, and the town council should be figuring something out.
Well, I think it went back to the Board of Education in 2022. I, I don't think we can control the Board of Education, they haven't returned it to us, so, you know, I know that the town administrator has been working with the Board of Education to say, hey, it was supposed to be returned February 28th. I mean, we, what can you do? You can't, you know, beat the Board of Education, they have other priorities. And so obviously, but it's, it's a, an important amenity to the town, and we'll see what they come back with, with the Board of Education. But I just wanted to give you an update so you didn't think that this had, you know, totally fallen by the wayside. If you've gone by the sword, well.
Council level.
It, well, anyway, we will see.
These restrictions have always existed?
They've always existed, and the community still appreciates the ability to play tennis on the tennis courts.
I, I share your concern that if it comes back where they hold to the restrictions, what is the town, I mean, it is a group to send that back?
Right. Well, I don't know, but I'm, I'm sure it did, it went back in 2022. But I'm sure there's also an opportunity, and we can send a, we can send another letter, we can also, you know, certainly it's got to be on the town council's agenda, and we could certainly make our opinion known at the town council meeting, but.
I would be happy to make a motion to reemphasize the letter we already sent.
We can resend the letter too?
And add that the town council should fund the tennis courts if the Board of Education is unwilling. The time for negotiation is over. It's time to make sure that we retain our tennis courts. So I, I do have a motion to resend the letter and to add that we believe that the town council would fund the tennis court refurbishment if there is no other option.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. So that's, any other items? Any final comments? I hope everybody has a, a very happy holiday and happy spring. Thank you. We are adjourned.
What's up?